Okay, go.
Okay. Bring the October meeting of the Clean City Commission to order. May I have a roll call, please?
C Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Present.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Vice Chairperson Ferry.
Here.
Commissioner Hollins.
Here.
Commissioner Selaya.
Here.
Commissioner Bonacore.
Here.
Thank you all for showing up and participating. We lucked out, we had a really great day, the wind didn't blow too hard. And so we weren't chasing trash everywhere. Town really looked great afterwards, I thought. I did not get a count from Maria as to exactly how many people we wound up getting as volunteers, but it seemed to be enough to handle most of the area.
The last count I heard was 135.
It was 135?
Yeah, but maybe one person signed up, but there may be 10 people involved.
Exactly, that was the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was the organization, 135 group societies. Some were maybe two people, some were 20 people. We had the chief degrees. I guess they're more than a trainee, they're not trainees, they're explorer kind of police? Is that what you call that?
I think it's cadet program.
Cadet, that's the word I was trying to come up with, cadet program. And thank goodness, between them and the Public Works, we had enough people to take care of Bashes, between Bashes and the Maverick gas station. And it was unbelievably bad this year. I've never seen it quite as bad as it was. One funny little thing happened while we were doing it. The little area right up close to Bashes store where the people park their vehicles and I don't know where they emptied their ashtrays and everything else, stuff blows and the weeds are tall right there and it gets really bad. Well, Commissioner McKay and I were cleaning that area and we got the heavy stuff off, but there were cigarette butts and whatnot there. And so we went off to clean other areas adjacent to it. And a young lady, I think she was a staff member, she came over and was sitting down and picking up cigarette butts.
Oh, that's nice.
Picked up a $5 bill and we stepped right over the top of them.
That's nice, though, maybe she'll in the future be like, "Oh, this is really good."
As I understand, only one syringe was found, which was kinda nice. Usually we get more than that. Anybody else have anything they'd want to say?
Everything at the United Way, sign up was good, breakfast was good. Everything went well.
I was amazed that somebody came out from Bashes and said it had only been two weeks since the last time they had it cleaned.
Yeah.
Wow.
Oh my God. And so I'm glad C went home and got the rake and we were raking up. Because there's a lot of the stuff that was just too little to sit there with.
The grabbers, they just, I mean, my fingers were getting sore from trying to squeeze that grabber to pull it out in the weed, so we went and got rakes and pulled it out that way. So we got a lot of weed, but we also got a lot of trash.
I was thinking maybe next year I saw the rakes, small rakes, or even the doggy pooper's scoopers. Got one at home, that would be good. We have one of those, especially if you've got a whole bunch of cigarette butts around, because you could just ride into there.
Exactly.
And I carried my bag right on my, right inside of belt, and I just carried that bag along with me, I just had to open up, dump it in right up my waist. Perfect, so next year those little... Yeah, but it has us.
Yeah.
It would be great, helpful.
So in our little group, we had about 24 volunteers sign up or sign in, and we hauled out about 68 bags of trash.
Wow, that's great.
Maria tried to get some weed eaters. Unfortunately, they didn't work. They were old and she didn't have enough batteries that she had with them weren't strong enough. Next year, I think we'll pick the weed eaters, especially for that area around Bashes and across from Maverick, and knock some of that heavy stuff down over to it.
Did you all come by with the big vehicles and mowed it?
They mowed that area, yeah.
We had weed eaters out in front of Bashes.
And also Public Works did the medium in between, middle, they did that on both sides. So that definitely...
It looked...
And it looks like the United Way is getting the okay to do it again in April, just before the fun run. So we could maybe schedule, if that works out, schedule our cleanup right away. Anything else on, any other, have anything to say? Okay. Move on to item four, old business. Clean City Commission shirts. Discussion and possible action regarding updating the Clean City Commission shirts to include new safety features. Everybody see what was in our packet? Lots of things to look at here.
I think those yellow wicking polyester bird's eye t-shirts.
Now, which ones do you look?
Oh, keep going. Right there.
These two here.
Like 1383 a piece?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
What do our normal t-shirts cost us that we usually wear?
I don't know, I don't think we've bought any since we've been working with you.
Is this the cost without the print on it? Okay. So we're just deciding on a... Yes.
Because...
But do we need two shirts?
That's what I was thinking, and I'll just throw this out to see what other people think. We have our Clean City Commission t-shirts with the logo on it. If we want something for safety, I was thinking just wear one of the vests over the top of that.
Yeah.
Just when we're out on the streets cleaning and we wouldn't... Not that there's anything wrong with looking like somebody that works for Public Works, but what job is over with?
Is there a requirement?
Yeah, I think it's just, you know, we've worked real hard to make sure that we're outfitting our people correctly with proper PPE. And I guess we'd just like to continue that through. And if, you know, our folks are gonna be out there working with the commission, I think it'd be good if everybody had the retro reflective shirts.
What's your recommendation here on the first, on the first thing of shirts? Are the ones with the retro reflective, are they any of these shirts? Or is there a specific one you want us to look at?
These would all be type 2, I believe, class 2. So that, those are suitable for working out, you know, in daylight hours. You know, our people generally have class 3 because we're called out at night to work on them. So any of these class 2, anti-class 2 shirts would be suitable for daytime use.
Where do I see class 1 and class 2?
So like this one here with the black and red? Is that one, or do you just mean the ones with the reflective tape like that on them?
Just a refund, I guess.
It's probably these.
We were thinking we might wanna have one t-shirt to wear, you know, with the retro reflectivity for the cleanups, then maybe one polo shirt to wear.
Out in a bell?
At these meetings, or if you go in other city functions.
Yeah, that was the only, I was looking at this $11.50. I don't know what the quality of this shirt is, and it doesn't say whether it comes in any other colors or not, but I'm sure it would. When you start getting into this Under Armour and name brand stuff, it gets really expensive.
And I'm wondering if, about just the vests, like you had said, just having the vests, what does cost? I know we had them out at Cascades, they had, you know, it's like orange or yellow with, and it has the reflective stripes and all of that.
Yeah, I guess I've kinda pushed some of our departments towards the t-shirts because I know they're gonna wear them.
Yeah.
And they're not gonna, they get hot, they're not gonna take the vest off and set it off on the side of the room.
Yeah.
So I would, I would recommend the t-shirt.
I know the ones, the little reflective vests with the, they were giving, loading out for the day of carrying, United Way bought those and they were just a couple dollars each. They were real cheapos, but they did the job.
They are, but I think they were, I know it cost them $10.
For the whole packet?
For the whole packet. But I don't remember the quantity that was in that packet.
Well, they have them. And I had a look closely at them, but they do have the reflective vests of 996, too.
So I feel like...
Well, that's probably the same thing as what they got for the day of carrying.
I don't remember how, how much reflective bands and all of that they have. But I mean, I understand what you're saying, that people will say, it's like, not like they're gonna take their tops off either at work.
Well, if the recommendation is to get one of these shirts, I think the one that is the yellow wicking polyester bird's eye shirt for 1383 is nice. It's not too tacky looking, these ones.
And then we can get them printed? Yeah.
Now, is that extra on top of that?
Yeah.
It is kinda nice because they're breathable, too.
Just the logo over where the pocket would be and leave off the one on the back?
I'd do the back, just because if it's small, people might not, especially if you're female, not wanna be caught staring at your chest to try to read the tiny print, but having big print, you know, it advertises when you're standing in line.
Put a big logo on it.
Yeah, whatever, you know, we have stuff on the back of our shirts now, anyway, so then people can read it.
Just keep that, just keep that.
Yeah.
I'm checking on it.
Yeah, maybe just to the back.
What that would be. Yeah, because those probably would be done with a silk screen process.
Yeah, I mean, that's the consensus, we can order those and then we can talk about the logos and printing, be the man.
Do they have more sizes or just those two?
Yeah, what's the difference between...
No, there was four of the sizes.
Oh, good. Yeah, it's not really necessary. But the one thing is they're very breathable, it seems like they would be maybe more comfortable in the heat.
What's the difference between the XK, 31 XK75 and 31 XK78? They're both the same price.
Size, one is a large, one is an extra large.
Oh, okay, okay. Gotcha.
There's another shirt, that's one of the polo type shirts, but there's a lot of them that are less expensive, like this, you know, any of these.
Do we need one?
Like the wear guard ones are from 1499, and those are really nice looking.
And they have both male and female on the shirts.
And then the second one that says more shirt examples, that one's nice looking, too. I mean, that's a woman's one, but they probably have a men, and that's on clearance for 1050. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I didn't hear what you said.
I missed the clearance.
I think we probably missed the clearance price on that one.
Okay.
Because it's been a month.
Could we leave it, like if we all agreed on a nice, light breathable polo, that you could just get one that's on clearance or a good price? Because they're all, they all look the same to me, kind of.
Because all of them are the same color?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think that would make sense.
Yeah, I think that would be...
I think we could all wear hot pink, right?
Yeah.
I thought black, but I was thinking black.
I like the green, because then it's...
Well, definitely, keeping with the theme of...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Green being...
Right.
Wow, oh my God.
And we've just been purchasing enough of these for the meat, for the commission and maybe a couple of...
I know.
Actually, just in case something happens, yeah.
Um, could we like consider, it doesn't have to be Nike, you know? Some of these are like...
Sorry, they were all kind of...
Save the budget for like awarding people stuff.
Some of these are like, the wear guards are, well, they were from 1499. And those, they may not be on sale anymore, but they're definitely less expensive, yes.
Yeah.
Well, on the reflective shirts, we wanna look into the 1383 price.
Yeah.
What kind of a, there's a price break of any kind on those? Or what's the price would be with the printing on it?
This is just a thought, these are just for us to wear. And it's the other ones we would still use in order to add giveaways to help promote.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've, right, right.
So can we just trust Donna to order some that are the best deal in a green for the polo and the less expensive reflective one?
I don't know how it works with ordering sizes. The average size is probably a large, but we have a few mediums, I'm sure, here.
Can we custom order?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So I just need to get the guys...
And... And as far as the polo shirt goes, does anybody have any preference as to which one they prefer?
Why not just wear the wear guard? There's a men and there's a women's. It's very first.
Yeah, they were, some of them were, they had it on sale for 1499, which is a darn good price.
A handsome looking shirt, too.
Yeah, that's a darn good one.
We could get the green.
Yeah, does the wear guard come in other colors? Or is the green, okay. So if we actually went to Aramark, so we could get the, let's go to Aramark.
And we want that printed? Anything on that indicate who we are?
Yeah.
I would say just the logo, yeah.
That would be really nice.
Yeah, because, you know, when we go to these various meetings and whatnot, it's nice to have some, just a t-shirt.
So what kind of green are you leaning towards?
Do we need to make a motion on this now, to...
What kind of green are you leaning towards?
Like forest green or like...
Oh, probably a light green.
You think white? What if we're like the color of a recycling can?
Yeah.
Green.
I don't know what, I'm going to the Aramark site to see what...
I think she can get any color in the shirts, right? Almost?
Most any color, yeah.
As I say, why don't Donna kind of research that and see just what the color selection is on these things?
But go with the wear guard, men, wear guard, women's, right? Wear tech? 1499?
Yes, here's one here. It's up on my screen.
Okay.
How did you get to that page?
I didn't.
Donna's stylish, she'll find us some good shirts.
I mean, it got them down as low as 999, but I'd be real skeptical about the wearability of that shirt.
Or washability of those shirts.
Wash it one time, change color.
Or they fall apart.
Yeah, if you guys would like me to, I can just... Over them.
I like the lighter green. Okay. What's it called?
I don't, I don't...
Okay.
Or, I won't...
Then, rather than making a motion on it tonight, why don't we continue this until our next meeting?
I make a motion, we continue.
Motion's made that we continue, I hear a second.
Second.
Motion made, we continue this, then seconded, all in paper, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Because you could even send us the links that we could click on and then we can add...
At Aramark. We will just have to be careful of open meeting laws for group emails.
Oh, no, I'm saying, I'm saying in the, you know how she put it in the packet? And there's links in the packet, have the link go to the Aramark site on the page where those are. So like right now, I just went to the Aramark site, but I didn't, wasn't able to search that exact thing. So then, yeah, we wouldn't be, we'd be within the meeting to look at it.
Right, it's just if Donna sends you a link, don't reply all when you reply.
Oh, no, no, I wasn't suggesting sending us the link, I'm saying...
Just to remind you.
Yeah, I was saying in the meeting thing, like this has links, the agenda has links within it, if it had a link that went to Aramark, then we could look at Aramark's site during the meeting, and we won't violate our meeting law.
Okay. All right, anything else before we go on? Nothing, then move on. Number four, item B, American Recycle Poster Essay Contest. Discussion and possible action, I focus, regarding the planning for the American Recycle Poster Essay Contest.
So our super volunteer, Nina Brackett, has been going out to the schools, I don't know if any of the commissioners made any trips out with her. But, so she'll be picking up the entries on November 5th, and we've already identified who's judging one. So the judging will take place on 6th and 7th. Kind of a, any update?
I do have one question. I'm scheduled to judge the essays and poems with Vicki. And the seventh, I have to leave at noon, is that present a problem?
I'm sure we can work around it. I'm sure we can accommodate that.
Thank you.
Quick question on that, the time of day we would be judging?
Starts at 9:00.
At 9:00, okay. I'd have to know at a time because I would have to request time off of work, so that's my only thing. If it's during the daytime, so, I'm a volunteer, but we'll have to see on my phone.
I'm not even speaking into this, wow. Okay, yeah, I'd have to see what time of day, the whole thing, because I'd have to know well in advance, and I'd have to take time off of work to do it, so.
You know that last year, we actually took the whole gap to do it. A lot.
Yeah, that might be better, especially for me, a better idea. Is that noise again?
I think that's the way we should do it, is the volunteer take a packet home and grade them and turn them in, and then we can kind of sit down like we did before and go through them, okay?
Nice.
Oh, one year I did the judging and there was a cheat sheet that you could grade the things?
Yeah.
Is that still available?
I don't know, I'd have to ask Richard, so, we didn't have it last year, right?
Um, I thought we did have a cheat sheet last year, and we marked them down for their...
How many points for each section of...
Right, I volunteered, but I couldn't, my mother.
Oh, that's right, yes, yes.
So, but it was the year before, I didn't have a cheat sheet.
And we had that same one last year that we had the year before. Right, right.
If we can have that, it would be beneficial for me, at least.
Okay, I'll ask me, I think that would be...
Thank you.
That would be good, a helpful guide.
Were we supposed to, some of the volunteers, some of the commissioners volunteered, I thought, to go to the schools and actually see, talk to the kids, or was that...
That's what I thought, Nina had asked a couple volunteers.
The impression I got from Bush, that was something that they could accommodate their classroom, what they were teaching at the time, and if they had time. So I would assume since the days have passed, that they will...
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And you guys have all the volunteers you need for that? Those two poster for judging?
Yes.
The judging and the posters is really fun, because we sit down and throw them out on the table and, and we get down to one.
I remember that, that was really fun. They're sweet.
Anything else? Any other questions on... That we will actually set a date then to judge them and... And then have the presentation happen. Okay, we can move on? Let's see. New business, item number five. December Clean City Commission Meeting. Discussion and possible action regarding the cancellation, canceling the December Clean City Commission Meeting due to the proximity to the holidays. We will meet in November, and that should take care of our t-shirt situation, the posters. Anybody got any comments about not meeting in December?
The other thing is election of officers, we could do that with the first meeting in January?
Yes, you could do that in January.
Yeah, we could do that then, but we're gonna have on the, on item B, there's a discussion of possible, you know, our, our time is up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but going back to the agenda for December Commission Meeting, do we want to cancel it or keep it on the, or keep it, the meeting?
What is the date in December that we...
19th.
Will everybody be in town on the 19th?
Yeah.
Yes.
How about you folks? I have no problem with meeting in December.
I just, I guess I was thinking that if we could take care of the appointments in November, shirts, I don't know that we have much regular business to go over in December.
As far as business that we would be taking care of... taken care of in December, I don't know that there's anything pressing that, that uh wouldn't carry over to January.
Yes.
Um, I don't know if you guys remember the awards ceremony or the last one.
Mm-hmm.
It absorbed the whole, we didn't have a forum, so it worked out.
Yeah.
But they had those, or not.
It did.
No, it was it was in February.
Yeah, yeah, we had it over at the Tower House.
Right.
And uh, it did, well, of course, we didn't have a forum, so we really couldn't talk any more to us anyway.
You probably could have, but there wasn't.
Right.
So, and I'm not how much is this located? At first, but it's in uh, pre-appointment, but it's not, it's not like this.
Well, that's true, too.
Totally is.
Yeah.
That's true, too.
Again, could we, uh, we'll be meeting in November, is there a, we have to give the city a notice in advance, way in advance, or can we give them a notice in November that we're not gonna meet for December?
We could do that, that's fine.
Why, why don't we see how the, how the awards situation goes, and if we have time to have a, a talk about that, then we can cancel it on, on November or have our meeting in December.
Okay, I make a motion that we table this issue till the November meeting.
Okay. Motion's been made, seconded, that we table, uh, the December uh, canceling, or canceling the December meeting, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We carry. Okay. And uh in new business, item B, Commissioner reappointment, discussion regarding the possible reappointment of Chairman Russell, Commissioner Bowman, and Commissioner Kawaya uh, to new terms to begin on January first, two thousand and twenty.
I'm willing to continue as my health continues.
Ditto.
I'm willing to continue, I'm considering. I am considering one of the commissions, but I haven't even looked into it, so, I didn't, I didn't realize it was coming up so close.
How many terms have you?
On the, sort of on the spot.
I don't know.
Three terms, I think.
Right. Yeah. I don't know, kick me out, I'm okay.
Uh.
Whatever. Whichever way, it's not like it's.
I think there, there is something on, on, once, once you've reached three terms, it has to be approved through the council or something.
I think I already got it approved for an extension.
Already, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, wait.
All appointments have to be.
It all.
But if you're going for your third term, that requires a super.
I'll be put up with, put up with having me run, run the commission, I'll, I'll do another term.
I'm sorry, Donna, I didn't hear you again, I let my hair need to.
I wasn't looking at you. Um, I, that's you, Russell, I. Both will.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Oh, okay.
You're good.
Again, whatever, whatever, if we have any talent bank applications, they would go to the council with your application.
I'm sorry.
If we have any new talent bank applica- app, applications for the commission, they would go along with you, I don't think we have any at the moment.
And then it was kind of like, do it now.
And I, I don't know if. I don't know if this fits into this timeframe or not, but is Commissioner Garcia gonna continue, if she's missed, what, two meetings in a row now and?
I haven't.
Okay.
I will try, yeah.
And I'll, I'll give her a call and see what her status is, cause uh, I don't know if she can't be, if she can't attend, but I think we need to look. Know their spot. So where do we take this, I, I'm not, I, this is new ground for me, I don't know what we do here.
Well, if you're all interested, I mean, we'll just proceed, probably um depending on when we get a chance to go through the talent bank application, we'll just take it to council.
Okay.
Your own, if it didn't serve and along with whatever new ones we may get. We'll, we'll take that sometime in December.
Oh.
No. Don't be.
Hey, hey, do you speak up such?
Yeah, look, she's asking if, if somebody misses, if a commissioner misses a certain number of meetings, does that automatically exclude them from the commission, and not really, I think, you know, I've never done it, I really haven't seen it done, but I think a commission could go to the council and ask for somebody else to be appointed. Generally, when somebody starts missing many meetings, if they're dealing with something in that moment or they've kind of lost interest and tell us eventually, and then we'll, we'll take it to council.
Yeah, there's no hard fast rule that says that you miss X number of meetings, you're out the door.
I don't think so, but I go back to the city code.
Okay, um. Oh, there was before we move on, uh, there was one question I had that I meant to bring up back uh, before. In our packet, there was uh, in regards to the cleanup, there was a little questionnaire, were we to fill that out and turn it in?
No, that was to the people that I asked.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to see how much stuff.
Good enough, good enough. Okay, then we can move on to item six, announcements by commission members. Uh, limited to announcements available, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings. Commissioner Hollins.
I don't have much that applies to that, I, I do have a comment to, to make. We're talking about the uh the recycling program and, and that we make some money with the recycling, or didn't cost us money or what have you, or whatever, like what, forty dollars or something like that? Just got the, the national average prices for natural HDPE went up from last month, it was twenty-five point eighty-eight cents a pound, this month it was forty-three, or forty-six point three eight. Well, that means if we could mail those, get a truckload of them for the natural, that would be thirty-seven thousand dollars a load. For the color, the price went from nine point nine four to thirteen oh six, which would be ten thousand a load, if we had a compactor and could get a truckload of them and sell them.
Yeah, if we have a compactor, but we don't have one.
Excuse me, my point.
We can't, we can't.
Excuse me, this is, I'm sorry, this is not the agenda, so.
Yeah.
The statement is fine, but I guess any further.
So
let's put that on the agenda and let's talk about making money with the recycling.
Hey, we made forty dollars last night.
And on the water, we could have made a whole lot more.
So recycling prices on the agenda?
Nothing.
I already uh, made my comments about the um the adoptive lock. I think my Google assistant heard me on my phone. Um, and uh, so I'm going to continue follow-up with those. Uh, I would like to request hot cocoa and chocolate on the agenda if we meet in December. Oh.
Hot cocoa and chocolate for, for December meeting?
Well, it used to be.
Sugar free.
It used to be in December, uh.
Cheesecake.
Ken, Ken Watkins would bring in cheesecake, and it was an excellent cheesecake.
Yeah.
Chris McQuaya, you have anything?
Um, no.
Chris, open.
Um. October twenty-third, four o'clock, United Way, to discuss April. Do you remember getting the email?
I'm sorry?
October the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Four o'clock.
Oh, at the.
United.
United Way, yes.
That's all I have.
Um. I don't know if everybody saw this in the newspaper, uh, on November third, there, we're gonna be doing a hazardous waste event sponsored by Mojave County and Kingman Fire Department, and uh, it listed all of the hazardous things that can be brought in and disposed of. Like, gonna talk with Eddie to see about getting suppliers on that, uh, actually get this basically printed up take it to a few places, find where, could get into that. One thing, the only, the other thing that I have that I'd like to, uh, if I may, uh, share with the commission and uh uh, it had to do with the parade, Andy Divine Day's parade. For those that weren't in the right spot at the right time to witness this, uh, you missed out. When we, when we lined up, uh, to chauffeur the dignitaries down the parade route, uh, the, had us all set in, in our staging area by number, and uh, I was chauffeuring the grand marshal at the parade. And so, uh, I was number ten, and there was this black, about a fifty-one or two Chevrolet, uh, that was number eight, and uh they, they brought him out and he started down the parade route, and the next one was a family, uh, the husband and wife and, and two girls and a big poodle, and they were giving away candy, and so they followed this Chevrolet, and so you got instructions, if you started at the staging spot, that if the group in front stopped, you stopped, and that kept the interval the way it's supposed to be, the right distance. And so, uh, then it was my turn and I pulled up, well, there's two little boys that were in front of me that had a big banner that said Grand Marshal on the banner. And uh, and so they gave us the instructions, if the car in front or the group in front stops, you stop and keep the interval. Well, I don't think the little boys understood or heard, but at any rate, as we start down the parade route, uh, the Chevrolet stops and the little boys keep walking and the family that was passing out candy, they were running back and forth from side to side, uh, passing out candy. And so by the time we got past Second Street and onto Third, the little boys had gotten so far ahead of me, uh that the people that were passing out the candy dropped in between me and the boys carrying the banner saying Grand Marshal. So when we arrived at the, at the uh, reviewing stand, the Chevy goes by, the little boys with the banner that says Grand Marshal come up and right behind them is this big, very handsome poodle. And that's all I have. The only saving factor is my car has a sign up that says Grand Marshal, so that saved the day. All right, if there's nothing else, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to re-adjourn, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Return.